On behalf of the Board of Education, I welcome you to this March regular meeting. Thank you for your attendance and we understand that if you are here for a particular item or items on the agenda and that you need to leave after those agendas have been, those agenda items have been dealt with, we understand if you need to slip out. So we are happy to have you for as long as you can stay and we welcome you. We will rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. The first agenda item is adoption of the agenda and we have, probably have some changes to the agenda, Ms. Ferris?
Board Chair and Board, I'd like to recommend that we amend the agenda to move Item 6, delete that, and move it to 10A where Mr. Joe Nance will give us an update on our funding. That would be 10A. I'd like to also add Agenda Item Number 42 to read as closed session, KRS. 61, 810, subsection 1, F.
Other questions about the agenda? A motion is in order on the adoption of the agenda with the changes noted.
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Swob.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wolf. Other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries four to zero with Ms. Fatkin absent. A motion is in order to excuse Ms. Fatkin from the meeting.
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Swob.
I want you all to fight over the second one.
Second by Ms. Wolf. Other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries four to zero, thank you. The next item is approval of the amendments. Does anyone have questions about the amendments of February 21st, 2012 regular meeting or the February 29th, 2012 disciplinary hearings meeting? A motion is in order on the adoption of those two sets of amendments.
I make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Wolf.
I wasn't there for the second one.
Oh, that's right, you know, we need to consider those separately, thank you. So first, the motion will be on the minutes, adopting the minutes of the February 21st, 2012 regular meeting.
Make a motion.
So, motion by Ms. Wolf.
Second.
Second by Dr. Kudak. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries four to zero with Ms. Fatkin absent and not voting. Now, a motion is in order to approve the minutes of the special meeting for disciplinary hearings on February 29th.
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Swob.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wolf. Discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries three to zero with Dr. Kudak being absent from that meeting and Ms. Fatkin being absent from this meeting. Other questions related to the amendments now? The next item is public comments. Has anyone signed in to address the board? Okay, we have two individuals who have signed in, John Graves and Steve Graves. Ms. Graves? And their topic is special needs.
I'd first like to clarify from last month, if there was confusion about my questions that I raised regarding special needs kids, were not in any way reflective of the work done by Mr. Stump or others in that department that I have had dealings with, so to speak. So, I want to make that clear. It seems to be a misunderstanding that Mr. Stump was somehow responsible for my comments. So, I want to be very clear of that. Any anger or frustration or anything doesn't need to be dealt with in a manner that is someone screaming loud enough that can be heard throughout the building. If someone is angry, that is all on me. So, that's the first thing I'd like to clarify. The second thing is, Mr. Stump will be presenting the presentation that he has put together regarding the special needs programs and things that are going on. So, I have looked at that and felt that there were a few things I wanted to address because I know that this is my time in which he starts, I will not be allowed to respond to anything that he says. So, I want to clarify a few issues. First of all is that the report's very well put together, it's got some excellent numbers in it, and glad to see some of the things that were in there. The other thing is, what you're not going to hear on there is that the number for home school disabled students is incorrect. I know, like, what I know of is a very minor incorrectness, but I know for absolute fact that the number is incorrect and it's not due to the point of Mr. Stump or anyone in his department, it's due to District Goffess not following up on paperwork. As we all know, you have to submit a form for a home school that comes to here, once it's gotten here, prior to the start of the school year, then the parent receives a letter stating, "I know you're a home school. I know that didn't happen." For absolute fact, I know that did not happen. So, that's problem one that we're not going to hear on there. Now, what I know is minor, but who knows what else is on there that's incorrect? It also, and what set all this off was the 18% drop in disabled students that was brought about in the January 17th meeting. That prior years, there had been a drop of students at 1% to 1.5%. Since that time, it just went downhill and that's what got my attention and that's what prompted all this, to get this done. Now, there's still not an account, as far as I can see, for that 18%. If that 18% is an actual correct number, then we need to account for that. I think it's kind of absurd that we don't already know. And we have, I mean, we should be tracking these kids, we should know if they graduate, we should know if they're leaving the public school system for another school system, we should know if they're on homebound, which is an astounding number of kids right now on homebound, and we should also know if they are being home schooled or moved to private school. We should know if they got, we should have all of this information. And it's almost shocking to know that there are students, or potential students at least, here in Clark County, 18% with disabilities and we don't know where they are. So, I think that, you know, I'd like to see the board come up with some sort of plan to figure out where these kids are. If it's a, you know, mistake on a report, excellent. And I hope that is the case because I would hate to think that there are 18% of disabled students getting absolutely no help from a public school system that they are entitled to. So hopefully that is the incorrect number. But, on the line of reports, you're not going to hear on Mr. Stump's report that there are a number of reports that are being sent into the state, they must be sent in by December 1, these are reports not comprised of, by Mr. Stump. They are reports that go into the state that generate funding for both kids in Head Start and kids in preschool. So, the numbers that we got for the 18% was only for students ages 6 to 21. We have students in the school system, in the preschool department, that are 3, 4, and 5 years old. So, that means if that 18% is correct, it's an even higher number because they didn't have all the students, potentially. So, there's the other issue that needs to be dealt with. The reports are being sent to the state, they're either not being done correctly or timely. And that information is what is used on a per child basis for funding coming into the school. And it all circles around, a lack of funding is going to mean less children in the school if you can't afford to pay a teacher. So, I would like to see how many of these homebound students are disabled students that are being homebound because they can't care for them because they don't have the funds or the availability to do so in the preschool department. Mr. Stump will talk about the staff, he will tell you that there's been a shockingly number of excellent people moved, not allowed back in, recalled back, slipped, whatever, and that the staff is meeting the state compliant level. But in the past, they've had two aides in a room to be able to help, as opposed to now they only have one. And his staff is being worked today. I mean, that's why you're losing, you're losing not just the staffs and you're losing your therapists that are there in the preschool. Do you all have a question?
No ma'am. Go to you.
So, they are, they've got a number of issues over there that are not being addressed staff-wise. The staff is overworked and they may be compliant, but what you don't know is that they are not only being teachers, they are being janitors. Because the janitor that is over there is apparently-
Excuse me, Ms. Graves, that sometimes gets into some personnel matters, even if you mention a position, sometimes by location that identifies a person, you can't do that in open session.
Okay, well, let me just say, the teachers are being called upon to do more than teach in the classroom. They are being called to, we have certified individuals performing jobs that they ought not be, we have aides that are not in the room with the kids because they're doing other duties, so we'll leave it at that. We're spending millions of dollars on high school. While we're doing that, we have a preschool department that doesn't even have instruction paper. You have a preschool department that can't even afford paper towels. This is coming from staff. You have a preschool department that gladly will tell you there's a lot of very basic needs that are not being done. And not only are they not being done, they're not even being addressed. There are regular meetings with our superintendent and her staff regarding issues in this realm and nobody's doing anything about it. You will not hear of any fundraisers, you will not hear of anybody going in there to see what they need, you won't hear of anybody talking to them, nobody's doing it. These kids are just left out there in a building that has a history of mold problems and other issues that take place. These are children with compromised health. Mr. Kudak can speak clearly on what happens to special needs children and their health when they are exposed repeatedly to mold and other conditions in the building. So, that's the other issue that needs to be addressed there. So while we're running around spending money, not to say that the high school is not needed, but just that we also need to look, we have the most fragile amongst us and they're not even being addressed. And that is not the fault of the exceptional children department or the preschool area, that's here. That's it, you're all speaking. Now, Brandon, you may not have known, hopefully this is the first time, you know, the board has heard of these things and they will be addressed, because that's what I would like to think that would happen. Now, I have, I have done extensive research from what I did not know, extensive research. And I have sufficient reason to believe that there is a direct and intentional mismanagement of money. I also know that in this realm-
Excuse me, your topic is special needs.
It is, it's mismanagement of money that comes from the state and the federal government directed to special needs. I think that's pretty well on topic, Judy.
Okay, thank you, but when you were saying mismanagement of funds, that was pretty general.
I apologize for not being clear.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the money is coming from the state and the federal government through KIRA and all their Head Start programs and all the things that they have going on, but that money is not being used where it needs to be used. Only after I requested financial records from the district did a report finally get generated regarding this money. Now, I do realize, I don't know how much you all know about money, but when I looked up online, I found that financial issues fall to the superintendent from the best that I can tell from the way the laws are written. Now, if I misunderstood that, I apologize, but from what I saw, that's where the money was. But, that definitely needs to be checked into. Someone needs to be generating some reports and figuring out where this money is and where it's been spent. I am here not to be combat. I am here not on a personal agenda. I am here as a parent and as an advocate for special needs kids. In 2005, I wrote a three-part series at the Winchester Sun, ran on the front page regarding educating the disabled. The things that I investigated then in that report have dramatically changed. That was written in July, if you want to check the archives, on the Winchester Sun. What I found then, which was ECDC, not preschool, was dramatically different. I found a just absolutely committed group of people, board members included, and I interviewed people at central office, I interviewed people in schools, and it was amazing. And I wrote a very good article on it, or a very, good for me, but good for the school. And I have written several things in favor of Clark County schools. I have always taught my children that they need to support their teachers and you guys. We can't do this any longer, though. We have come to a point where things are just going straight down and if we don't stop it, we're going to be in the national news. And there's plenty of other Kentucky places that are in the national news for what they're doing or not doing with special needs kids. So, I am here to ask the board to come up with a plan that will address these issues and not just have a plan, but have benchmarks, have obtainable goals, talk to the people directly involved, meet with parents. I implore you to please hold a time in which parents can talk to you and not a time in which you just sit there and listen, a time in which you interact with them, help them understand your side. We want to, but if you don't talk to us, we can't. I want Clark County Public Schools to be a success. I want this board and superintendent to be a success. I want to support you, but you've got to stop looking at me as your enemy, because I'm not, I'm not your enemy at all. But you've got to do something for these kids.
Thank you.
You mind if I do anything that could address while I'm here?
Thank you. And Steve Graves.
First of all, I might like to make a motion that maybe the student-staff recognitions go before the public comments in the future, just because I'm sorry you have to suffer through some of my comments, but we are obviously, as a community, very proud of these people to be recognized. A couple months ago, I addressed the board with some grave concerns that I had about our community and our relations with our administration and with the school board. And I feel like it's only my duty to have a follow-up conversation about that, and I'm sure Judy, you can correct me if I say something wrong conversationally, but in the manner of which things were handled a couple months ago, we were afforded the ability to come and speak and in a public comment section, many people in our community were concerned about personnel issues, which I understand, we can't talk about, but from that time period, I think, just because I got up and spoke during that school board meeting, several people around the community have contacted me and wished to remain anonymous. Now, why they wished to remain anonymous was, first of all, very disconcerting to me in that why did they not feel free to voice their concerns themselves to our board and to our school system? I'm a businessperson, I own a business in Winchester, anybody in business knows that the best policy is to always have your employees come to you with your concerns and with things that can improve your company. The way it seems that we're managing things right now, that is definitely not being done. What I have heard is that many people are very scared to voice their comments, people that are currently employed within the Clark County Public School System. Many of their concerns are valid, I understand some of the things they're saying, some of the things that people have told me, I do not have documentation for, I can't personally validate what they're saying, but I can tell you that there's a common theme in everything from people that work within the public school system here. And I actually, I come with a heavy heart because of the stories and things that I've heard from people. I know people are very concerned in this time period for their jobs, we don't have a very good economy right now, everyone is scared for their jobs, they don't want to come forward with information that may jeopardize their job in some way, and I understand that and I feel for them. But at the same time, I guess I have some responsibility, at least because I spoke publicly earlier about some matters in relation to personnel issues within the school system, that I at least validate and speak for those people that feel scared to speak for themselves. And as I have collated this information over the past couple weeks, I didn't know exactly how to bullet point each topic, but something appeared in the Courier-Journal just a couple days ago that really caught my eye. And it's about a different public school system, one that's much larger than I own, but it does sum up some of the things that people have been telling me, so I can read that. In the Courier-Journal, in relation to really the Jefferson County Public School System, let's put it out there, "In December, two outside experts hired by the school board to examine the district's central office said that the administration is riddled with favoritism, biased hiring, unqualified personnel, and should be overhauled." Now, that is, in a nutshell, the summary of what I feel like that people are saying, but many people are very scared to come forward and say that. Now, I know, you know, I can't really provide you documentation on those people, I know that probably some things have come to light that I've been made aware of, that you know of, but at the same time, it doesn't seem like it's the best way to run a school system. I don't feel like we're a family here in this community, there's just too many things going on. When we get right down to it, it's about the kids, it's about educating our kids, and we need to leave the politics out of it, we need to get down to the basics, and we need to start trying to figure out how we can make an overhaul like these experts had to tell them. I don't think we need any experts to tell us that we've got some real problems here. And certainly, anybody can call me at any time, my representative is BJ, and certainly we can discuss that as well, and so I'm willing to work with whatever we need to do and put it out here. I have no overwhelming desire to come after work and speak to the school board every day, but it's a desire, as a parent of five kids in this county, that we have some kind of accountability for what's taking place in our school system. So, I'm sorry I can't give you more details, but I have all the details, I just feel like the, you know, the people that have entrusted me with their trust are saying, you know, this is what's taking place, do what you can and we'll go from there. So what I'm asking you as a board is we just really need to take a look at some fine-toothed look at some of the things that are going on here and find out where we have some shortcomings and let's see what we can do about it. Thank you so much, Judy.
I just want to make a comment as the superintendent. I do feel like tonight that there has been some personal comments toward me, I want it stated in minutes, and I know this is a public meeting and I want it reported as well, that I personally feel like Mr. and Mrs. Graves have come on a witch hunt, they have come with no documentation of anything that they have accused me of doing and saying to staff here. I am very respectful to my staff, I take my job very seriously, and I have sat here for about two months and I have allowed them to say everything and anything that they wanted to say personally about me, but tonight, I want this to be recorded, that they are encroaching harassment. They are calling my staff and asking questions about me, they are calling my staff and they are trying to get them to say things about me that are not true, and I want this community and this public to understand that I will not allow them to harass me any longer, and if it continues, they will hear from my attorney. I want this board to hear that, I want the board attorney to hear that, who is your attorney, and I want this public to hear that. I want it in the records and I know that it has been recorded, so I want that stated tonight. Thank you so very much for allowing me to say what I needed to say.
And you would be in for that. I have evidence, I have.
Excuse me, that's out of order, that's out of order, Ms. Graves.
Out of order, not for that.
The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, beginning with the staff and student recognitions.
Thank you all for coming, I apologize that you had to sit through this, but that's part of the agenda, we're not going to handle that. Tonight, we want to recognize Nicole Arnett, a fourth grader, a fourth grade student at Strode Station Elementary School, who takes second place in the Braille Challenge National Competition. Is Nicole with us tonight? Absolutely. Nicole is a fourth grader at Strode Station Elementary School, she also attends a short course program at the Kentucky School for the Blind several weeks out of each year due to her blindness. Most recently, Nicole took second place in the National Blind Challenge Competition hosted at the Kentucky School for the Blind. The Braille Challenge is a national competition for school-aged children who read and write Braille. Children are judged on a reading comprehension, spelling, and proofreading text utilizing Braille as the primary mode of communication. Nicole competed against third and fourth graders throughout the state. In addition to this great accomplishment, Nicole has succeeded all other students in the Clark County School System in the Accelerator Reading Points. Let's give her a big hand. She uses both Braille and auditory reading technologies as accommodations to her learning experiences. After high school graduation, Nicole aspires to become a writer of mystery novels. Nicole, please. We have an excellent special ed department at Strode Station Elementary School, as you can attest to it, and Nicole is just doing wonderful things at Strode Station, and thank the staff as well, and the parents, thank you. This time, we want to recognize another one of our students. Actually, these are adults. We realize how important it is for our kids to see consistency in our schools every day with our teachers, cooks, custodians, and administrators. So this year, we have started to recognize our bus drivers. We know how hard it is sometimes for our bus drivers to work with our kids, first person they see in the morning is the last person they see in the afternoon. So this year, we started a recognition program, and the program was for perfect attendance for our bus drivers. So this year, we are going to award several of our bus drivers who have had perfect attendance since August, and if you will come forward- Okay, we also want to recognize our County Spelling Bee winner this year, and that is Michelle Yang. Michelle also placed eighth in the state spelling bee out of 64 students in Louisville on March the 10th. Michelle is a fifth grader at Strode Station. Strode.
Strode.
And we also have another student from Strode Station, Megan Huff, who is a third grader. And Megan won first place in the State Highway Adopt a Highway poster contest for her age group. And her poster is now part of the official calendar for Adopt a Highway. The theme for this year's calendar was "Littering is Not Cool, Man." So, Megan, please come forward. And I don't know if you've seen the calendar, but there it is, right there. All right. And we have one more student recognition. Fannie Bush Elementary School would like to recognize Haley Clay, a seventh grade... okay, Fannie Bush is recognizing this individual, I got you. It's recognizing Haley Clay, who is a seventh grade student at Conkright Middle School, for her dedication to student achievement. Haley is a former student from Fannie Bush, and during the 2011 summer break, she contacted the principal, Ms. Angie Taylor, and asked if she could volunteer time before the start of her instructional day to help and support elementary students. Haley rides the bus with the elementary students and arrives at Fannie Bush School at 7:00 a.m. every morning. She spends the rest of the morning helping the kindergarten students with literacy-first skills in small groups. She can be found sitting in a circle working with students on a letter sound recognition, phenomenal awareness, color words, sight words, and listening. Haley also has talent for music. She occasionally will share and play her flute with the students. She will talk to them about parts of the instrument and how it creates sound. Haley plans to be a veterinarian, and her dedication to achievement and service will make her an outstanding citizen. Haley, please come forward. But, isn't that awesome for a seventh grader today? As Taylor would say. Thank you all so very much for coming out, and thank you, parents, for supporting our recognition tonight. And as I always like to do, will our parents of our students please stand, and I know a couple of them have left, will our parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, please stand of all of our students and staff that's been recognized tonight? Thank you all so very much for coming. And as our board chair says, if you need to leave at this time, you may.
But hold on just a second, we do have one more Yes Award tonight. Today, our superintendent successfully defended an emergency court for Dr. DeMurray. So, we have a Yes Award of your excellence showed.
It's hard to hide stuff.
It is very true. And this is from your board. I just want to say thank everybody in this room, my staff, teachers, central office, students of Clark County, I couldn't have done it without you, and that's where my heart is. I love this school district, and everything I do every day is because I love the kids and the staff that I work with. Thank you so very much.
And my other one slipped, so thank you very much. update, Mr. Christie and Mr. Cooper.
Good evening, I'm Mike Cooper, and I appreciate you entertaining my summary of this program. As you know, we've been at it for two years now, and I've just prepared this one-page summary for your package, go through the points that are in there. The energy management plan is required by statute. This is not a fad or a start and stop program. Energy costs are expected to increase to 15% to 30% by 2016, so energy savings may help preserve other positions if we can save some energy. In the blocks that are presented under the fiscal or financial status, you'll see three blocks. One of them is what the KSBA and Seminole Grant, the School Energy Management Program Grant, has contributed over the two-year period. The next block was what the district has contributed to cover my cost. And then, the cumulative savings, or actually, the security of voided costs because some of them are savings. That number consists of the energy savings that have been created over the two years, rate corrections, the rate case the KSBA intervened on behalf of the schools, and things to come that will also be achieved in that cumulative avoided cost will be the natural gas coalition negotiations that are able to fix the cost for natural gas for the next 18 months. We've been benefiting from it. Now, those numbers are through January or through December of 2011, but they cover the fiscal year. Major accomplishments that the program has completed during the time period is that we have kept you compliant with the KRS 160.325, and the board policy, that is, to create an energy management plan in the school district teams. We have reviewed your Jerky Rets with KU, Clark Energy, UBS, and got the very best rates that will give you the least cost for those utilities. I have monitored the monthly bills over the two-year period and reported on those monthly bills, and I can say that we are improving. Last year, we showed a 5% decrease in usage, and I reported to you all about that, but at the same time, I said that we had another 7% in cost. So, while usage is coming down, cost is going up. I just finished the February numbers today, and while we had a district reduction of 4%, the cost only went down 1%. So, it's going to continue, and we need to be aggressive about energy conservation. We have assessed all the facilities that will be remaining and have had reports completed for cost effective modifications that remain. In the future, we hope that we can get the Kentucky Utility Repays applications. This is meant for Montgomery County, for example, about $3,000 a year for just maintenance items that are done on a standard basis, replacing existing worn-out equipment with energy efficient. While we weren't able to be successful in getting the PRIDE grant, many of those conservation measures that were promoted in that application are taking place. E-lites for gymnasiums, set-back thermometers, and so on, so forth. We need to get students involved and foster that program at all schools with student involvement. We need to set a goal to reduce our existing EUI, Energy Utilization Index, is what that stands for. It's basically energy use per square foot per year. District-wide is now 76.8. We need to reduce it by 10% to get it down to 69. If we are able to do that, we could yield almost $96,000 in savings per year. So, the barriers and challenges that we have to overcome are top-down support, that is cooperation with faculty, staff, and so on, energy managers' future funds, which is what my pitch is all about, and capital improvements of funding that can afford more energy conservation technology to schools. I appreciate your time, and I hope you'll consider this position favorably in the future budget.
What is the plan on the student involvement? How is the organization of the student teams within the schools going?
That's one of the areas we talked about, the barriers and challenges that we're going on. Of course, we've got the district team put together, we have in some schools, we have the school teams put together, and as we move later this year, or even over the summer, we plan on working with the schools, the staff, and the school teams. I wanted to mention that where we have worked hard, our three largest users that I've had the most control over the quick to control with, the central office, bus garage, and our athletic fields. This month, at Central Office, we reached out with 25% reduction in energy usage. The bus garage has dropped 19%, and the athletic fields is just under that. That's where we've got tight troubles if we work with the group of people, that's why these energy teams in school are so important. But we've got to move that into the building so that there's not going to see those kinds of things, so we can reach that line if that's not happening. If we set a goal of 10%, I think we can do a lot better than that. The energy audits we've done in the schools, through this program, we've taken those audits from going back, we've applied for some grants we didn't do, some of the things that you look at, maintenance reports, we'll come on and do it, and since we've changed the lights out, and a couple of the gyms already were starting their bus garage to change up, and the athletic lights out, and the energy efficient equipment there, we're listening to different heating systems. We've got control of the set-back apartment, and nobody's complaining about the building, so it's worth it. We're working on getting those higher, no need heating buildings, cooling buildings at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. We'll let them know, set back heating systems, making their buildings, with somebody like Mike in our system, who controls that we're going to have any buildings, it's going to be for not, with open systems, it can reduce energy usage. And a building the size of a new high school was much as 20%, that's huge.
District's had to pack this program for four or five years, you have to have recorded savings at 25%. And once they get the controls, monitoring systems installed, further 10% is achieved.
We were just talking, I think we've got the glass that he does that shows the usage is going to start separating those out, the principals are going to start seeing those in the building once, so that they can see what they are, what it looks like over the last three years down the chain. So, we've got all that with us through Mike.
I'll share that with you. If anybody would be interested in receiving.
We can put you on mail, on email, as you can see these every month.
Yes, as well.
So, you do want them?
Yes, we would like to have these. Yes, that would be excellent.
I'll have a little notice, we put on there too.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
And just to follow up, I'm going to a meeting tomorrow at CKC with the other three superintendents that are also a part of the grant, and so, we'll be discussing that on tomorrow, so I'll have some information to bring back to you to, for you to decide if you want to continue with this.
Okay. And next, we have the Special Education Program Services Overview, Mr. Stone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Get my eye crochets on here. I'm the age where I'm becoming quite dependent on these. As directed by Superintendent, excuse me, by Dr. Ferris, Superintendent, we have prepared for your review, five data tables reflecting five-year trends of both academic and non-academic data for our students with disabilities as compared to local, regional, and state populations. You have those on highlight, I trust they've taken a good look at those. Yet, the data that we will review this evening is far from a comprehensive list of data we regularly collect and monitor our students with disabilities. For example, this presentation will not address the ongoing progress data that we collect on every student with a disability in this district at every ARD meeting that reviews goals and objectives. This presentation will not address the monthly name and claim meetings that we have with every principal, every special education staff, every building in this district that looks at map data, mastery check data, research-based intervention data for programs that we monitor monthly. But for tonight's purposes, the data that we have prepared for your review was collected primarily from state and federal databases, including the December 1 CalCom report, the Kentucky Continuous Monitoring Quarterly Reports, and state ad hoc reports from that infinite campus. But as we review the following five tables of data, what I'd like to do for the matter of expediency is to briefly hit the highlights and the narrative that have also been provided to you. Get through the review of the data, and then offer some time for questions or comments. Okay? So, if you look at Table 1, column 1, birdly, depicts the five-year trend total of special education student counts for PK through 12, grade levels, as of December 1 of the academic year. The five-year trend reflects a net reduction of approximately 88 students over the five-year period. As Dr. Arvin had presented to the board in earlier months, he quoted a reduction of 134 students on the SEEK calculation analysis, which focused primarily on students in our district ages 6 through 21. This data that I'm showing you is a reflection of students pre-K through 21. So, there's approximately 50-some student difference when you look at the two databases, or when you consider those two databases, which one can prefer. We have more kids at the early intervention levels than we do now at our 6 through, age 6 through 21 levels. As a general rule of thumb, we have approximately 120 to 140 children in our preschool program now who are identified with disabilities at ages 3 and 4 that we're giving some intensive early intervention services to. Those are increased numbers of kids that we serve now. And as some of the board members may remember, and I'm sure that you do, six, seven years ago, we converted, as a district and as a board, a small program out behind Clark Regional Hospital called ECDC that consisted of two classrooms, serving 77 kids half-day, to a 320-student program, serving 120 to 140 kids with disabilities. The second column depicts the annual certified teacher count for special education reported on the December 1 CalCom report. Over the five-year period, as you can see, we've reduced from 2007 to 2012 approximately eight staff, five of those were teachers. district ages 6 through 21. This data that I'm showing you is a reflection of students pre-K through 21. So there's approximately 50-some student difference when you look at the two databases, or when you consider those two databases, which one can prefer. We have more kids at the early intervention levels than we do now at our 6 through, age 6 through 21 levels. As a general rule of thumb, we have approximately 120 to 140 children in our preschool program now who are identified with disabilities at ages 3 and 4 that we're giving some intensive early intervention services to. Those are increased numbers of kids that we serve now. And as some of the board members may remember, and I'm sure that you do, six, seven years ago, we converted, as a district and as a board, a small program out behind Clark Regional Hospital called ECDC that consisted of two classrooms, serving 77 kids half-day, to a 320-student program, serving 120 to 140 kids with disabilities. The second column depicts the annual certified teacher count for special education reported on December 1 CalCom report. Over the five-year period, as you can see, we've reduced from 2007 to 2011, 12, approximately eight staff, five of those were teachers, three being special education facilitators that were assigned to schools. But typically, a net loss of five teachers. But you must consider also the net loss of students as well. The third and fourth columns of the table reflect the annual attendance rates for students with disabilities and for all enrolled Clark County Public School students for the list of academic years. Although both populations have demonstrated fairly stable attendance rates over the five-year trend, in the most recent school year, both populations have demonstrated an marked improvement in their school attendance. Has to be the flag as well. And both populations are fairly commensurate when you look at the very last year and their attendance rates. And I might also add, kids with disabilities have more propensity in this school based on their health conditions and health status. It's real impressive to me that those statistics, those percentages are very commensurate. The last two columns reflect the annual totals for the request of parents for their children to be approved, private, school, or home schooled. This data was pulled out of Infinite Campus based on the numbers of parents who have requested them. You can see the statistics on the right side relative to the percentage of our populations and how that's reflected. What this table does not demonstrate, however, is the number of parents in our community who have had children in home school or in private schools that have re-enrolled their children back into our district. So one courtesy, and even though that data is not presented here, that there is some offsetting, certainly there are some students in our community that re-enrolled in our public schools and private homeschools. So those percentages are maximum percentages when we're not considering that re-enrollment population. Based on our rear comment, I added another note here as well, that we, as a public school system, are the stewards of a fund called a private proportionate amount fund that we spend on children, that we are, what we govern on children in our community who are enrolled in private and homeschools. Every December 1, we have to post to the newspaper in any way that we can, in postings. We call private schools, we call parents of children home, with children home schooled, and we ask if they have any children with disabilities that we can count on December 1, because that generates the fund that I must manage to spend on kids in private schools with disabilities. That number has never been, in some years, over 12. That ranges 6, 8, 10, 12 kids. And we work pretty hard in trying to identify kids in our community with disabilities. I think that's a pretty good indicator of how many kids might be out there. Of course, I do acknowledge to you that some parents may not want us to count those kids, and certainly that may be a factor. But for the most part, that count has been pretty stable over the years, and we are pretty diligent in trying to get them to count kids in private schools, let's money to our private schools and our homeschools. Table 2, first two columns of this table depict the annual percentage rates for student graduations as compared to the subpopulation of students with disabilities and the general population of students. With the exception of the '06-'07 school year, graduation rates for our students with disabilities have consistently exceeded the rate of our total student population for four past four academic years. Retention rates, the second, third columns of this table depict the annual percentage rates for students' retentions as compared to the subpopulation of students with disabilities and the general population of all students. This data reflects consistently lower annual percentages of students with disabilities as having been retained as compared to our total general student population. Dropout rates, the last three columns of this table reflect annual dropout rates for our total student populations. With the exception of the 2010-11 school year, the annual percentages of our disability student population, subpopulation, has consistently been at or below our district total student enrollment dropout percentages. Compared to the state targets for this category, our district has, over the past five-year trend, consistently matched or significantly met the state target for this category, as you can see on the table. Table 3, this table depicts the four-year trend for the inclusion of children with disabilities in our highly qualified regular education classrooms. And for me, as I stated in the narrative, this is one of the most powerful databases I think in our district. The first line of the table horizontally reflects our efforts in inclusion as compared to the state target for this category. Consistently, we have exceeded by roughly 20 percentage points the state target for inclusion of our students with disabilities in a category of 80 to 100% in regular education classes, and most of our kids are 100% in those classes. In the mid-range of inclusion category, 60 to 80% in regular ed, we have consistently exceeded the state established ceiling of 11% or below, meaning that by more than 5%. And in the most restrictive category, less than 40%, we have significantly achieved the state ceiling of 2% or below. And overall, our district far exceeds the state expectations for inclusion of students with disabilities in regular education for the last six. Proficiency trends, as I stated in the report, this really is where the rubber hits the rug. This table depicts the proficiency rates of students with disabilities across four years as compared to local, regional, and state percent performances and targets. As referenced, our district fell short on the state targets and the state actual performance in the annual aggregated proficiency rates for this population in the '08-'09 school years. Then we started getting, during these years, our rate placed between the 12th and 15th among the regional schools. Following that, beginning in the 2010 school year, our district significantly increased our proficiency rates among our disability subpopulation by approximately 15% in reading and 18% in math. The rate was continued in the 2011 school year. Currently, the district proficiency rate for this subpopulation places our district with a third highest rates in our region in reading and the fifth highest rates in math among the 23 regional districts. Additionally, in the past two-year assessment cycles, our district has consistently exceeded both the state proficiency targets for this subpopulation and the actual state performances among the subpopulation. And then finally, in Table 5, the table represents our most current statistics comparing prevalence rates of each of the 14 disability categories among the local, regional, and state averages. Generally, the table depicts that we have a significantly higher rate of children in the more severe and low incidence categories, including children with mild mental cognitive disabilities, MMD, children with severe cognitive impairments, FMD, children with severe hearing impairments, HI, and children with developmental delays. And I think the developmental delay also relates directly to our preschool as well. We have a lot of kids with developmental delays in that area. Clark County rates among the remaining 10 categories are either at or below both regional and state rates, but overall, our total disability incident rates are below both regional and state averages at 0.46% and 1.8% respectively. That's the data we prepared for you. Happy to entertain any more questions, comments, or requests for additional information based on presentations or information that was posed to you.
On the last set of graphs, I would appreciate a little bit more explanation of what each of the classifications and abbreviations are. I know them from a medical standpoint, I don't know them from an educational standpoint, I know there is a difference between the two.
Okay, would you like to do that now?
If you, if it won't take too long, sure.
MMD is children with mild mental disabilities, that's children with IQs that range between 55 and 70, and they must also have commensurately low adaptive behavior skills. Two prompts. Children with FMD are children with IQ scores below 55 with commensurately low adaptive behavior skills. SLD is specific learning disability. There must be a significant difference between a child's intellectual ability and their academic performance, rather significant difference. If there is not that difference, then they do not qualify for the criteria for a specific learning disability in reading, math, or written language. OHI is other health impaired, that's all of the categories that don't quite fit any of the other 13 categories, like children with ADHD, diabetes, or any other medical condition that meets that criteria. But there also is another second prompt to that, and that the condition must also affect academic performance based on the average job. EBD is emotional behavioral disability. Kids must demonstrate rather significant elevations of behavior across settings to significant degrees, must also affect education. MD is multiple disability. Children with multiple disabilities, more than severe disabilities, you can't have two lower incidence disabilities that will qualify for that. Deafblind is a good example. DD, developmental delay, children are eligible for developmental delay if they are 1.5 standard deviations below the mean in two separate developmental categories, or two standard deviations in one, 1.5 in two. They're only eligible for that category up through 8 to 9. SL is speech language, that's really our lowest, or highest incidence category, children with speech language and articulation issues. HI, of course, is hearing impairment. Autism, we have 135 students in this district with autism. OI is orthopedically impaired, physical. VI is visually impaired. DV is deaf blind, and TBI is traumatic brain injury, each with a specific criteria.
One thing that I had asked about in an email, I think, is, and I knew that when we got this, that it probably couldn't be done for this meeting, would be a financial, you know, what did we spend comparatively in that same five-year period or whatever that this report covers?
I'd be happy to.
And the data in here is excellent, was very, very good.
Yes, very, very good.
Presented well, and...
The narrative was, I'm sorry, I'll hush.
Yes, yes, but, no, tell me, that's fine.
Narrative was like, okay, everything, I read down through it, and as I went through, it's like, wow, okay, this makes sense. It's like Cliff Notes, best word to describe it. Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
This is probably one of the programs that are probably more harder for laypeople to understand if you haven't experienced it. So I thought it was a good report as well, and we always continue to focus on our students with disabilities, as the principals would tell you, and Donald said earlier, his staff are in schools every day and having those real conversations about what else do we need to do to ensure that we are providing an equitable and high expectations for our students with disabilities. And it's been off.
And if I may, one statistic I've always been very proud of and continue to be, is that this district has never, ever, ever entertained a request for a new process hearing from a parent with a disability, ever. And if you ask your board colleagues across the state, that's truly unprecedented. We do a great job with our relationships with our families and our parents, working with our kids. It's all about relationships and respect, and I feel that a county our size, 25th largest in the state, not having ever had a history of any process hearing experience is quite imminent.
Yes, that just speaks so highly and favorably of the folks involved in that program and the leadership in that department and in the district.
They do a great job, Donald.
Excellent, thank you. The next item, our attendance reports, banner time, et cetera.
Speaking of flags. Don, I appreciate that.
My special award.
Okay, seventh month attendance, can you believe we only have like 39 days left of school?
No. Can you believe it?
Okay. For the seventh month, we, maybe you'll go to this first one, we look at where we are by schools in comparison to where we were last year. And at the end of the seventh month last year, we were at 92. At the end of the seventh month this year, we were at 93. But in the next one, to date, from the beginning of school, we're at 94.59, and we're still maintaining. Last year this time, as I noted in the transmittal, we're at 93.1, so we're still hanging in there. And is Mr. Hall in here? Mr. Hall? I would like to say for the most improvement for the seventh month is Clark County Day Tree. Yes, we kind of keep track of that also, on a month-by-month basis. And the flag is flying at Hollywood.
And next, our state and district updates from the stairs.
I don't have any specifically tonight, since we have such a long agenda.
Okay. Then we will proceed to our Student Learning and Instructional Services. Mr. Willen with the Implementation Impact Check for the College and Career Readiness component.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison, board. Looking at the district improvement plan initiated last month, starting a single look at each component and how we're doing on implementation and what kind of impact that we're having last month. Miss Constan, I presented the achievement component this month. I'm back with the College and Career Readiness component. You've had this for a couple of days. Don't miss it, I'll read it to you, but I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you have or address anything that you saw that you wanted to talk about.
I wish I had sticky note capability here, and I left my sticky notes, but... Is this the report that has the pull-out part in it?
May I hear what you're saying?
The pull-out for, maybe it's a different report I'm looking at. When students are pulled from their elective areas.
For interventions.
For interventions, yes.
Yes, let me find that for you.
Where?
14.
Strategy 14? CCR 14.
Oh, I'm too far, I thought it was too far. Okay, my question is, having been an elective area teacher, and having done what I felt was really rigorous instruction, and where we have been emphasizing rigorous instruction for all program areas for a good time now, how do students who are pulled from their elective classes, in which we hope that rigorous instruction is occurring, to do the interventions in the core classes, tested areas, when do they make up that rigorous instruction that they're missing in their elective areas?
I think you may give Mr. Ball that to figure this out.
What does that look like?
Well, I guess it's probably not the best setting, best setup we can do. That's the only way at the hospital we can get the kids to get the extra service needed to pull. We tried it on a rotational basis, but consistently pulled the same class. We're still doing that right now, but we had pulled back in math and the math in one areas, and we really did really hard, and what we did, we kind of went back and re-proved. We did our intervention teacher and a pedem teacher, and one of our other teachers, which were actually about two teachers, two teaching holiday law, and we seem to be reaching a lot more kids that way from pulling them out. We're still doing some reading, we do try to rotate it, but constantly the same class.
And if there is an assessment, I'm assuming going on in that elective area, they would not be taken during an assessment or whatever, okay? So there are some things built in there.
Yeah, we've got some safeguards.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Can you comment on, let's see, I think it's page 7, the use of the ILP? You've got it listed sixth grade and your senior, and the percentage completion varies from grade to grade.
Yes, especially in the 10th, the 11th grade.
Absolutely. The eighth and 10th grades will push to complete that this year because of Operation Preparation. They were accelerated with the activities that they do to complete that. My discussions with these folks, there's no concern that they're not going to get finished, it's just an ongoing part of how they teach across the year and use the ILP to complete it by the end of the year. So as this is, activities are ongoing, and they will reach completion with these by the end of the year. This was just the status point as of March 9 when I was collecting them.
And the ILP actually starts in the sixth grade, and so what happens is, at the end of the sixth grade year, they should be there. And so when they get to the seventh grade, it's a different phase that they're working on, if you go online and you look at it. And so it actually, by law, is supposed to start in sixth grade. And so it's probably one of those things sometimes that you, looking at sixth grade and you're working on a lot of other things, but now that we've done Operation Preparation, that has become more of a focus for us, so you will see more of that completion, and probably when we bring it back... Probably when we bring it back, I think it probably comes back to you all again in three months, that you should see these numbers increase significantly, especially in the sixth and seventh grade.
I think it's very important that we give our middle schoolers some career focus and some idea where they're going to go.
Right. And while we're on there, Barbara, can you kind of tell them about how many volunteers we had with our eighth and 10th graders with Operation Preparation?
We had over 210 volunteers. We actually did not have to use everyone. I will say that BCTC, many of their students volunteered five days. So we were able to give them a reprieve. We were not in school on that Friday, but we finished up with everyone. And when I come back with the component next month, I'll want to put some Operation Preparation comments in there.
Did every eighth grader get a chance?
Yes, every student and every 10th grade student was at the scene. Anywhere, some folks were with them for 10 minutes. Some folks I know went on as much as 30 minutes. It was kind of like, because we've got students waiting. It was quite a success. I have not spoken with one individual and I, we had lots of community members and a big shout out to the community for their involvement and their willingness to step forward with this, but has said this was a waste of time. It was, I think the volunteers left with as much or perhaps a little more than the students. But the students, I heard a lot of good comments from the students. Counselors have been giving me some feedback, so we'll be talking about that next month.
Excellent.
But we had over 210.
Other questions to Mr. Willen? Thank you. And now the overview of our 2011 Explore and Plan results with Rosenthal.
I get used to you on this side.
I know.
But you have a PowerPoint back there. A slide, just a slide on Explore and Plan. But if you don't, I'll talk a third bit. There should be a slide back there somewhere. I thought there was. Okay. I did actually, there was a slide on, just explain it to you how this came about.
Yes, there was.
There was. And really it came about in 2006 when the General Assembly came back with Senate Bill 130. It's probably been one of the best things Kentucky has done in a long time. Basically, if we give the Explore in the eighth grade and then Plan at the 10th grade, they take the same tests that were given on the ACT, which is English, Math, Reading, and Science. There's a different score scale for Explore in the eighth grade. It's 1 to 25, with 25 being the highest score. And that's a composite score of all four areas. Then when you go to Plan, it's 1 to 32. And of course, when you go to ACT, it's 1 to 36. So basically, it is, it sets the path towards ACT. Explore does not basically predict ACT. The Plan does predict your success on ACT or where you need help and how to go and what you need to work on to get to ACT. The Explore is more what the kids are going to be thinking about, their goals, their interests for their future careers. And it's really funny because we're talking about Operation Preparation. And I met with both high school and middle school students. And the middle school students, I said, was this pretty close to what you put that you like to do and you might want to be a construction worker or you like hands-on things? And every one of them said, that's exactly what I said that I like to deal with. I like to work for cars or I like to work. So basically, I went over there with them because I thought, you know, that's really important that they think they take classes that kind of mirror what they are interested in. So basically, these two programs lead us into the ACT, which is the indicator or predictor for college success. Let's look at Clark Middle first. Clark Middle took the Explorer test. One of the things, the first thing that we looked at, and I'm very briefly going to go over this, but the trends are what happened from 2006 to basically 2011. If you look at Clark Middle's trend data, you will see that pretty much in English, that they are on a plateau and they're not moving upward. Because if you go, they moved just very little and stayed within the 13 mark. In math, I can't say there is some movement forward because they're up in the 15s and they've started in the 13s. So you can see an increase in movement there. Reading, same as English, pretty much plateau, pretty much within the same category, a few points each time, but very little change and not up to where the state or the national level is in English or reading. Science, there was some trend forward in science, but it looked like at this, they got to the 16s and then this last year they fell back. However, at one point, it looked like they were maybe making movement in science. There's just this one year that they've had actually a fall back. So how does that look when you go to the benchmarks? If you go to the next page, you'll see how that looks. The benchmarks are on your, should be on the, down at the bottom of what they have to have, bottom of the chart to make a benchmark. And right below that, keep going down a little bit, Chris. I don't want to see it on, it's on there. I don't see it, but it was on there at one time. They have to have a certain score to meet the benchmark. And as you can see, Clark Middle has pretty much plateaued at the 59. They have made some movement in benchmarks, but they've stayed in the 50s and have not moved to the 60s, which in English. In math, there was a sharp decline in math this year in the benchmarks. A lot of kids stayed within the 15 to 19 range because I checked it. So basically, they had a large conglomerate of kids right in the middle that did not move to the higher level, which would be 19 on up. In reading, they basically have made some movement. And actually, reading is probably where the most, more kids missed the benchmark than anything, which is unusual for them because their scores actually went down in reading. But they, more kids made the benchmarks this year than they have in previous year. I think the one area is the science. That is something that we need to focus on because as you can see, they're not close to the state and they've made a sharp decline. One of the things that I talked with Ms. White-Suds about in the science is this year, they have actually have a reading and a writing initiative required, that the science teachers are doing with the students, where they have to write, read articles and write about them on a constant basis and actually do a project. And so she feels like this is going to have a difference in the science because she feels like the reading and writing was something that was missing from the science before. Let's go over to the next page and the ethnicity at Clark Middle. If you look in English, basically, they have both say the same from the year to year. I mean, African-American was down slightly, there is a gap there, but both, none of them moved. They did not move in English at all, just right on the same where they were. In math, there was a sharp decline for African-Americans in math, or significant, I would say, from 15 to 13.9. Not in Caucasian, smaller. They did lose points, but not as many as in African-American range at that point. The reason I'm not going with Hispanic is because of the numbers and there's so few and they're in, and the numbers are not consistent. So I'm trying to stay with the two categories that we have most of. Reading, we, basically, both of them went down, African-Americans more than Caucasians. And there is a gap there. And in science, both groups went down in science also. And probably are the closest they have been as far as gap wise, in the 15s. The last part is your gender. I'm not going to go with composite because it's more of it. But the gender part is interesting because the math and the science is right on with males and females. Pretty close. And where does it, where does this part lie? English and reading. As you can see, the females are way above 2%, 2 points difference. I mean, it's huge in English, which is your grammar situation. And there is a smaller difference in reading, but it's there. Math and science, they're almost dead on. So we've got to look at the English and the reading and that has to be the focus at Clark Middle as far as Plan as Explore. Now, I will say that today, Clark Middle took the Explorer test again for GEARU, which is the new program that is coming into both middle schools. And they will have those test scores back and I think they'll tell me in four weeks, three weeks. And so they will sit down with those kids before they leave and when they come back and work with them before they take the Explorer test in September. So that's a good part of GEARU, one of the things that they offer us. They may present GEARU more later. So we were real pleased with that part of it. Any questions about Clark Middle before I move on to CONCRETE? All right, to CONCRETE, the trends in English, basically, they did show a decline, a sharp decline in English this year and have, but at one point was staying up in the 14s. In math, there's not much you can say, they're above the national average. National average is 15.5 and they're at 16. And reading, they are staying at the 14, but they lost ground from last year, but they are in the ballpark of the national average, which is a 14. And your science, they are above the national average. So the math and the science is really strong there in trend-wise. Reading and English, the English would be the one that we would focus on the most because they lost a significant amount of points there this past year. Questions about that? All right, benchmarks, next page. They lost, of course, benchmark points quite a bit in English. Like I said, there was concern there because there was a significant drop in the trend there. In the math, they are still above the state at 33% making benchmarks. And it's, and in science, they're below the state at 36 to 42. And, I mean, I'm sorry, in reading. And in science, they are above the state, 16.7 to 14. So it shows up in both benchmarks. If the trends are that way, the benchmark's going to show up. So they had two areas, they were above national average. Ethnicity, although they were both down in English, as you can see, from 15.1 to 14 and 13.2, African-Americans and Caucasians, 12.4. And the next area, when you go to math, they went up in Caucasian and significantly up in African-Americans from 12.5 to 13.8. And if you look across the trend data here for African-Americans and for Caucasians in math, the trend data shows that they just keep rising. In reading, they have got, Caucasian students went down and as you can see, African-American students went up significantly, from 12 to 13.9, which is a good gap. And science, both African-Americans went up from 15 to 16.1 and they started 15.8 and Caucasian students didn't. So there are, there is some trend at CONCRETE for the student groups to be going up over the six years. Ethnicity, I mean, gender, they're basically the same as Clark Middle. And math and science, males and females are the same, close to the same, 16, 16, 13.7. And look what happens in reading in English, 13.4 to 14.3, 13.7 to 14.4. So those have to be the two focus for the middle schools because math and science seems to be catching up, both gender groups and not in the others, in the other two areas. Any questions about CONCRETE?
Yes.
Okay.
On the math, what are the numbers down the left side supposed to be?
On the, just math by itself?
Yes, it doesn't have numbers down the left side like the others.
I don't know, I don't have them.
And the numbers on the others, I tried to correlate them, but the numbers on the others don't have the...
I don't have those on there.
It's not on there, that's what she's saying.
That's what I'm saying, what are they supposed to be?
They are supposed to be the points up through...
Because the intervals on some of the others are not the same, so I didn't know which set we were supposed to use.
I'll have to go back and look at it and see what. It's probably a 2% interval on each one.
Well, but where does it start? Because one of them goes from 0, 0 to 18 and the other one just goes to 16. So I just, I couldn't follow how to read it.
I don't know that. I don't know, I'll have to go back and check with you and send you something on that because I'm not sure. I thought it was 2, 2% intervals, but I don't see it on all of them. You're right. On the math, it's not on there at all.
Right. And the others, it's not the same...
I'll check it.
Start and end.
All right, what about GRC? Well, we're pleased with GRC this year.
Yes, yes, that was terrific. Good job, Mr. Ballin.
You're in your staff.
And GRC staff and all involved.
Rocking and rolling.
GRC in English and the trend data, highest they've ever been on the national average. Slightly below in math, but the highest it's ever been in math. Reading on the national average. Science, 18.1 to 17.8, above the national average. And then the composite was at the national average. That's a really good report, I would say.
Yes, excellent.
It's a huge, huge significant gain in there.
It's big, it's big.
Yes.
Benchmark-wise, up there at the state, made a huge, up to 63 in English, those many benchmarks. Math, 31 from 19, 25 was the state, 37 to 44 in reading and those many benchmarks and they're 44 at the state. And 11 to 24 in the science, that's huge.
That's tremendous.
That's a lot of kids that met benchmarks that hadn't made it before. So that was, and 21% met benchmarks at the state, so that was, that was huge. In ethnicity, in English, both Caucasian and African-Americans went up. Caucasians more than African-Americans in English. In math, up slightly in African-Americans, quite a bit in Caucasians. And math from 16.5 to 17.7 is a huge, huge gain. Reading, up significantly, African-Americans and Caucasian, from 13.4 to 14.9 at 16. Actually, African-Americans outscored them quite a bit there. Science, that is probably the largest gain for both groups. I mean, 73 to 83 and 50, 40, 16, 6 is huge. Great numbers there, great data in the science. Largest gain overall that you've ever had in science. Our gender, we are seeing about the same thing that we're seeing in the middle schools. In the math, 17.3 and 17.4 between males and females and science, 18 and 18.2. But then when you go back to English, males are 15.4 and females are 17.1 and the rating is 16.1 and 17.5. So the more reading and writing that's done in the math and science classes, the more it's going to help the kids. And that's one of the things that we've put into place in the, in the middle schools and will be working with the high school on, is to have the reading and the writing not out of textbook, but the type of reading and writing that's going on in the world in their classes in science. And basically, that would increase most of it from just that part of it, having it as part of your curriculum. So it is, it's something we ought to work on. You have some questions about the Plan or congratulations to Mr. Ballin.
Yes, excellent, excellent work for that staff.
Really good scores.
Questions to Ms. Rosenthal about any of these, any of the data? Thanks very much, appreciate the reports. Good data. And now we go to the Student Support Services portion of the agenda. Some, I guess the first is Mr. Christie and Mr. Merle or whoever's named. Oh no, Mr. Nass, 10A, I'm on the wrong, I've got too many agenda things here. Too many things. So number six becomes 10A. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you so much, it's a pleasure to be here. And I am still an old gentleman, so I need to have paper in the show.
Yes, we like when you have paper. It refreshes our memory.
Paper, we need to do this.
Oh, this is a different kind of paper, but... Oh, that's the one I was looking for.
You know what you're looking for, don't you?
It is a pleasure to be here this evening, and what I'm going to talk about really leads right into the next agenda item, I think that's why you moved me down so it would be fresh on your mind. So let's, let's first refer to the five-page, or four-page handout that we used to send. And really, I'd like to go to the last page first, because we've gone through this whole process several times. But if you recall, over the last three years now, I guess, we purposely structured our prior bond, which was number one, was, you know, to get Phase One of the high school, so that it also be in a position to take full advantage of the special state funding that we received for the new elementary school and also for the Phase One CONCRIT innovation. And we structured that so that, beginning July 1st of this year, next fiscal year, we would be in a position to start having additional bonding potential to look at future projects. So what I'm showing you in this simple summary on this last page is that, once we get to July 1st, start of next fiscal year, we will have available for future projects $24 million of bonding potential. And so, you know, I think really when we first started talking back in the fall with projects, we had hoped for about $17 million, if I recall, was the last number that I had shown the board. But really, our special funding for the last two projects came in so good, and then once we get to next fiscal year, that's a very solid number for the board to look at to start planning for future projects on your facility. So I just want to give you a simple update on that. Now, the second handout that I'm giving, the BG1 form, I want you to turn to the second page there. Because what, what we will be doing if we approve this, we will now start to use part of that $24 million of bonding potential for future projects. Now, if you look at, at this, yeah, you've got it right on the screen. I have broken this spreadsheet down so that you can see what did we approve back in October of 2010 for Phase One of the high school, and what's being proposed now for Phase Two that we're calling the Technology Center addition, and then what our revised BG1 form would look like. Now, I will, on the left-hand side, the first thing I'll draw your attention to is if you go to the contingency section. If you recall, our bids really came in good on Phase One of the high school. We had the special qualified school construction bond allocation, that we wanted to use every bit of that to take advantage of the 0 percent interest. Because of that, we were able to budget a $4 million contingency in the high school. So we knew going into the high school project that we had a considerable amount of contingency that we could continue on with some additional phase at the high school. I think the board somehow later had decided that the technology center was what you wanted to pursue. And I think going back probably to maybe November, I think your architect had presented that with the contingencies left over, we could start with a shell of the technology center. Well, we're to the point now that here we are in March, and if we approved this BG1 and your architect proceeds with designing, he would actually be in a position to take bids at the end of June, which then we're at July 1st, that we can utilize our new bonding potential. So based on that and the stage you're in, and talking with your superintendent and talking with your architect, it really didn't make sense to break it up into two pieces, that let's do a Phase One shell now, come back in July with, you know, fully finishing of that. So what we can do now is go ahead and do a revised BG1, so that your architect can start with the full shell and finishing of the technology center. Now, what that involves is, look at the middle section, your architect is currently projecting a construction cost, the very first line and the second column, about $6.7 million. So that's the current projection of construction cost to completely do the technology center. Again, whenever you do a project, you've got to pay your architect. So we've got your architect on item down, we will be selling bonds for a portion of it. If you recall, when we sell bonds, we have an underwriting discount, we budgeted for that. The fiscal AP, which is where we come in to sell your bonds, and you'll notice the negative under contingency, that shows that we're using $3 million of the previous contingency for this project. Then you go down, we've got a small bank and rating fee, we have additional costs for your resident inspector, and then you've got other testing of 168. So we've got a grand total of need of additional $4,335,000 to completely finish the technology center instead of just doing the shell. And if you'll notice, over on the right-hand side, first column on the right-hand side says original 10.4 of 2010, that's what we approved back in October of 2010, which, which we're working under now. The middle column, what we're proposing to go with the contingency, we would be issuing an additional $4,350,000 of bonds, and we also have a $300,000 reimbursement from the Kentucky Department of Transportation for, for the improvements, for a grand total of $4,335,000. So I wanted you to see how it breaks out, because on the front page, this is the total that I showed on the previous page that's being presented to the board. So, you know, I think it's important, you know, to see what did we originally do, what are we actually doing in order to complete the technology center, and then the top form is what we will actually be approving.
And do we have the money?
And we have the money. So, to kind of bring it all together, on my first handout, we've got about $24 million of bonding potential as of July 1st. If the board decides to proceed with fully funding the, the building of the technology center, we're going to be using about $4 million of that $24 million. So we will then have a balance of about $20 million to go forward with whatever your next project is. So really, this is kind of a timely meeting, because, you know, I think we've all been so concentrated on getting completed funding, what we had on the table, but now we're to the position, we're getting close to next fiscal year, that we can start making plans for that additional $24 million. And if we approve this tonight, we would be taking that first step to obligating $4 million to that. Any questions?
Questions to Mr. Nance?
So really, no action on my part, this leads into the next action item, agenda.
Yes, thank you so much, Joe. We appreciate it and the, the way you help us better understand the financial matters. Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Nance. And now to item 11. Consider approval of the revised BG1 to include completion of the George Rogers Clark High School Phase Two Area Technology Center project, as explained and will be explained further, if we have questions to you all.
You have questions? You should have, he just gave you a copy, and then you also should have one to pack it up.
Yes. And the big set of plans you have there, Mr. Merle?
Next item.
Um, okay. I thought, where does that relate to BG1? Okay. Questions related to the revised BG1? Your recommendation, Dr. Ferris?
Wow, I'm not used to that yet.
I recommend that we approve the revised BG1 to include completion of George Rogers Clark High School Phase Two, which is the Area Technology Center project. Current BG1 is for the shell, this includes the entire package of Phase Two.
Okay. A motion is in order.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Dr. Kudak?
Second.
Second by Mr. Swob. Other discussion? Those in favor of approving the revised BG1 to include completion of the George Rogers Clark High School Phase Two Area Technology Center project, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero.
Exciting, that's-
That's, that's very exciting, that is very exciting. I'm sorry that Ms. Fatkin was not here to vote on this.
Yeah. I want to give her the approval.
Great news for this community.
Yes, that is, that is just excellent, so, very exciting. And now, the related matter would be the revised design development documents for the new Phase Two.
This roll is a little thicker than last time.
Yes.
We have been working since we got this news, and with the approval of your superintendent, we've kind of moved forward to be ready for tonight to ask you for approval of design development Phase Two, no more Phase 2A, 2B. And so, these are the documents with your approval tonight that we will send to the Department of Education for their continued review, to be able to continue to go forward, and we will advance to construction documents. Like Mr. Nance talked about, we're looking at trying to be at your May meeting for construction document approval, so we can bid in June.
In June, okay.
Kind of, that's kind of a schedule update of where we stand, so if you have any questions, but it's pretty much the same floor plan, everything's the same, just further developed, we're showing all the walls and all the internal matters now, and completing everything beyond the shell at the design development level, so.
Yes, very exciting.
Yes.
Any questions to Mr. Merle? Your recommendation, Dr. Ferris?
I recommend that we approve the revised design development documents for the new George Rogers Clark High School Phase Two.
Motion is in order.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Wool.
Second.
Second by Mr. Swob. Other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries four to zero with Ms. Fatkin absent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We want you up here for another 20 or 30 minutes.
Now, Ms. Disney, for a few items related to calendar, et cetera.
Yes. The first item is talking about the amended calendar for the current year. As you know, we missed two days of school, which is much better than last year, we see nine, and let's hope that it continues. And as I said on my rationale sheet that I sent for you, I gave you the details, we missed January 13 and March 5. And when we approved the calendar for this current year that we're in, it was decided to use, if we missed a day, we would use President's Day, and we did that as it became an instructional day, and then we missed on March 5. And so what I'm asking is for your consideration to amend the calendar, to reflect that May 18th will now be the last day for students, and May 21 will be the closing day. It's going to happen, just wait, now, come on, no more bad weather, I mean, it's 80 degrees out there. I know.
And it's March, and this is scary.
I know, it's March.
And it's very scary.
And we're mowing in March, I know, but anyway, at this point in time-
We'll put your tomatoes out.
Yes. At this point in time, this is the days we're looking at, so. And then also for your consideration, anytime, this is just standard practice, anytime we miss an instructional day, we always make the adjustment in the grading period, and I attach that-
Right, yes.
-for you also to, to look at. And when midterms go home and report cards go home and that sort of thing.
Questions about the amended calendar? My stay is May 18th for students and May 21st for staff.
Closing day.
So your recommendation, Dr. Ferris?
I recommend that we approve the amended 2011-2012 school calendar.
Motion is in order.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Dr. Kudak?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Wool. Other discussion?
That is right. That's 11 weeks of summer break.
Yes.
That's what we're discussing.
That's pretty scary.
That's nice.
We'll talk about that next, after the next.
Yes, right.
I know, it is, 11 weeks, wow.
Yeah. Well, those in favor of approving the 11 weeks, I mean, the 2011-2012 calendar, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no?
No negotiating with parents.
The motion carries four to zero with Ms. Fatkin absent. And now, consider the graduation, or the commencement date.
Yes. Commencement date for George Rogers Clark High School, the SBH and GRC has discussed this and approved this. Here's Mr. Vogel to go. But they're asking that, he's commencing, they're asking that the last day for students, which is May 18th, also be the graduation date, at 7:00. And in case of inclement weather, May 19 at 7 for the first alternate and May 20 at 7 for the second alternate.
Questions about those plans and contingency plans? So your recommendation, Dr. Ferris?
I recommend that we approve May 18th, 2012, for George Rogers Clark High School commencement date.
A motion is in order.
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Swob.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Wool. Other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero with Ms. Fatkin absent. And continuing for the school calendar for 2012-13.
Yes. Calendar committee met, and I think on one of the differences and similarities page, I gave you the composition of the committee, it was administrators, parents, and staff from all grade levels. We looked at several options, recognizing in mind that there are 11 weeks between when a school goes out at the time we're saying that we think it's going to go out, and looking at in August. And we discussed an early start and late start, we discussed several, several different things. And when we came back, they took their calendars forth, talked to their constituents, came back, and we met, and this was the recommendations that we came up with to, to give to you guys, option one and two. And basically, the only difference is that the quarter when we have fall break, and we usually have two days for fall break for students, and one of those days is day-to-day for staff, that it, do we have it on a Monday, Tuesday, or do we have it on a Thursday, Friday? If we have it on a Monday, Tuesday, you're extending, you're having a break, and then you're coming back for three weeks to end the grading period, the first nine week grading period. If you have it on a Thursday, Friday, you're completing the first nine weeks, and then you're having day-to-day, and then, well, students will be off two days and staff will be off one day in the weekend. And there are 11, as we stated, there are 11 weeks. And that was something that, that principals really talked about, Ms. Smith was on that committee, you know, that period of time, because, and that, and when looking at a later start, we are adding more time to getting the students back into school. That was very, that was discussed quite a bit.
Right. Any burning preferences here, board members?
I would suggest option one, because October 8th is Columbus Day, and so many people have off that day. I don't, but many people have off.
Yes, we have yours bring that up, and that was part of that also, there were, because I think that is a federal.
Yes. Okay.
The, I think the start, the leave on Thursday, come back on Wednesday is a little bit awkward, but I don't know how else to break up the two-week Christmas period, so.
Yeah, there's a tuffle up there.
What is it there?
You're leaving on a Thursday and you're coming back on a Wednesday, you're coming back on the next Thursday, it's midweek at times, which is a little awkward.
And, and, and it's basically what we did this year, I think we left on a Wednesday for the last day of school, and we came back on a Wednesday, because the holiday fell on Sunday, and anytime that occurs, you have to go to the next.
Have a Monday.
Right. And if you'll see in yellow, those are the instructional days in that calendar month, not the school month. Well, just kind of look at those also.
Other questions or discussion about the various options?
I like option one as well, for Dr. Kudak's reasoning, I'll let him stay.
So you're, are you ready for a recommendation? So the recommendation, Dr. Ferris?
I recommend option number one-
Okay.
-for the 2012-2013 school year calendar.
A motion is in order.
Oh, make that motion.
Motion by Dr. Kudak for option one.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Swob. Other discussion? Those in favor of adopting option one for the 2012-2013 school year calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries four to zero with Ms. Fatkin absent.
And we'll get this posted on the website tomorrow, because we have had some calls.
Right, yes, excellent. Thank you. Thank you. And next, we have the policy revisions, second reading.
Asking the board to consider approval of a second reading of revision of policy zero, three, point one, two, three, four, point one, two, three, five, point two, two, three, four, and point two, two, three, five.
Any questions related to those?
Yes, when would this be? Okay. So this would be for next year, not April first in two weeks.
Other questions related to the policy revisions? Your recommendation, Dr. Paris?
I recommend that we approve the second reading of revision of policies oh, three, point one, two, three, four, one, two, three, five, two, two, three, four, and two, two, three, five.
A motion is in order.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Wolf.
Second.
Second by Mr. Swob. Other discussion. Those in favor approving second reading of the revisions of policies as noted, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries four to zero with Ms. Patkin absent. Thank you. And continuing, the Kentucky Race to the Top Scope of Work Agreement.
We got money, so that's good. But, you know, Kentucky got the Race to the Top. Part of it was contention on the, what they call SITS, the Continuous Instructional Improvement Technology System, that they're putting in across the state to house all reporting, test bank, professional development for teachers, administration modules, to be able to pull down anything about any child that you want. It just, and the, actually, the evaluation system is gonna be in there. So, that was part of their grant. And we signed off on the first Race to the Top money years ago, and then we didn't get it. So we did get it this time, when they received the money, and we got fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars. And our, and you all are to assure that we will implement the professional development and train our teachers on the professional development, part of the SITS system, and that we will use the SITS system as a part of our evaluation, which will not be here until 2014-15. It will be piloted, and we are piloting it right now. And you are to assure that we will do this, and what we have developed for you to assure you that we will do this, is that we have performance measures for each of the activities that we would be doing, which would be training our teachers on publishing lesson, using the lesson planning part of the assessment module. We would be training the principals on the reporting part of the assessment module, where they can go in and create reports. And we'll be training the teachers and administrators on the professional growth and evaluation part of the SITS program. And we have our performance measures on page two there, to show you what we expect to get to in the next four years. And our action plan, which we're required to do as our scope of work, is provide that training, and we have put our money into providing training by, training teachers in each building, and having them teach the teachers, providing coaches ongoing within the building to help the teachers implement the assessment module, provide training for the administrators on how to bring, to bring a report, so that they can meet with their teachers, to show them how their students are doing in various areas of the, of the testing, of the core content testing. And the last part is to provide learning opportunities for teachers to enhance their evaluations in key indicators, and where they're not professionally distinguished. So basically, this would be done in four school sites, four school site licenses to begin with, and that would be high school, the two middle schools, and the Schuylkill Elementary. And so what I need for you all to, is to provide the approval for the assurances that we will do this, and we will start rolling this out if you all have...
Can you elaborate a minute, Pat, on the, the last performance measure? I don't really understand what we're looking at there. The last one, percentage of educators who...
The last performance measure is, if a, if this would be, actually, it is, the indicators that are in the new professional growth and evaluation system. If a teacher, if a principal says that a teacher is ineffective, then they would automatically key this teacher into the professional development system through what they call Common Core three sixty, which is a huge program. And they would meet back with the principal four times after they've seen various videos and can consult it. So it's basically to make, help the teacher do better in that area where there was not an effective indicator for the evaluation.
So are we saying that at the end of school year 2012-2013, we're going to have ten percent of the teachers who were evaluated as ineffective?
Could be. We're reducing it down to...
To zero by the end of two thousand, school year 2015?
And we have no idea of knowing that, looking...
So this is just a guess, estimate, prediction?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a prediction.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions related to the assurances for the Scope of Work? Your recommendation, Dr. Paris?
I recommend that we approve the Kentucky Race to the Top School District Scope of Work Agreement.
A motion is in order.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Dr. Kudak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Swob. Other discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries four to zero with Ms. Patkin absent. Thank you. And now, Ms. Clark. The first item being our revised capital outlay funds request.
As some of you recall, last May, we approved a five-hundred-thousand-dollar plan to use our capital outlay funds for some various expenses. And what we have done is taken that same plan and updated in red where we are today on those items. And what we have to do, and we're coming back to the board, there were two categories where we did not spend the original amount requested. The expenses were less than originally thought. One of those under student achievement being purchasing the Algebra I textbooks. We spent about twenty-nine thousand of the original fifty, so we had about twenty-thousand, eight hundred remaining. And also, we had the math audit last year, the budget of twenty-six thousand, and it was twenty-five thousand, five hundred. So, everything else that we have approved, that was approved before, we will continue to spend in the same categories. Those two particular items, we are asking the board to reallocate those funds to be used for summer school in 2012. So the request for the twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and three cents to be reallocated from textbooks and math audit to be spent for salaries for summer school in 2012.
Has a determination been made yet as to what the focus will be for summer school?
We are still looking at our data, but we do know that, based on the research, is that we're gonna be focusing on first grade instead of second grade, so we can catch those particular students, or we are exiting kindergartners from this year going into first grade that we'll be looking at. Is that right? Did I say that right? Okay. And we want to, we think we can, we will have enough funds, and based on the comments from our principals, they really want us to focus on literacy and math. So we're looking at trying to focus literacy and math for first grade, incoming first graders, exiting, help me, you all, fifth, fifth grade is going to sixth, and eighth grade is going to ninth, in both areas, literacy and math. That's what we're looking at. I think we found enough dollars to do that. But we don't know exactly how many kids yet, but that's what we want to look at, and that's basically what the principals have requested.
All right, thanks.
And I'll make the one last comment. This will be submitted to KDE for approval, because anytime we made a request, and we choose to reallocate the funds, they ask us to resubmit that. So we will go to KDE for approval as well.
Good point. Thank you. Questions? So your recommendation, Dr. Paris?
That we approve the revised capital outlay funds requesting an amount of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and three cents to be used for summer school for 2012.
A motion is in order.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Dr. Kudak.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wolf. Other discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries four to zero with Ms. Patkin absent. Thank you. Mr. Christie. So the, the various routine items related to construction.
First being the pay application number ten, code out construction services in the amount of nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five.
Your recommendation, Dr. Paris?
That we approve pay application number ten.
A motion is in order.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Dr. Kudak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Swob. Other discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries four to zero with Ms. Patkin absent. And continuing with additional pay application?
Pay application for number sixteen for the general contractor, D.W. Willard, for the Georgia Rogers Clark High School project, in the amount of seven hundred, three thousand, fifty-nine dollars. You know, since you look at that, that's, it's a much wider range.
Yes, yes.
It's about forty percent.
Oh, yeah. When are we getting our follow-up tour?
You're ready.
So what'd it work best for afternoon for, after what time?
In winter's, four o'clock.
At four o'clock.
When's a good tour time?
Thursday afternoon.
Is that a Thursday afternoon?
So the afternoon is I'm in the office, healing our children. So you want to be in the office two of Thursday every four hours?
So Thursday afternoon after four, does that work for you, Ms. Wolf?
This week?
Or sometime.
Next month.
It'd be nice to do it during this nice weather.
Thursday's supposed to be pretty, Brad's supposed to start, right?
I wouldn't know what did, he would be back from Kansas.
He'll be back, I think. Four o'clock?
Four o'clock?
I get, this week's gonna be tough, next week, it's better.
Next week, better?
Okay. We'll expect that the good weather will still hold.
It's twenty-nine. I'll make a motion.
Okay. Yes, we'll, we'll do that when we get to internal board business. Okay. Okay, for now, for now, the superintendent's recommendation, Dr. Paris, regarding application, pay application sixteen.
Recommend that we approve pay application number sixteen.
A motion is in order.
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Swob.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wolf. Other discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries four to zero with Ms. Patkin absent. And pay application number three for the new elementary school.
This one also for Codell Construction Company, in the amount of eighty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. Primarily our workshop drawings.
Questions about that matter? So your recommendation, Dr. Paris?
Recommend that we pay, that you pay application number three for their construction company for the new services for the new elementary school project.
A motion is in order.
Make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Wolf.
Second.
Second by Dr. Kudak. Other discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries four to zero with Ms. Patkin absent. Continuing with the next one.
It's pay application number three for Codell Construction Company for services for the concrete renovation project in the amount of fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-five cents, primarily shop drawings and performance.
Your recommendation, Dr. Paris?
Recommend that we approve pay application number three from Codell Construction Company for the construction services for concrete renovation project.
Motion is in order.
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Swob.
Second.
Second by Dr. Kudak. Other discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries four to zero with Ms. Patkin absent. And switching gears slightly, change order, change order is coming up.
Change order number twenty-eight at the Georgia Rogers Clark High School, in the amount of two thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty cents. This is for an addition and some reworking of the root drains in the auditorium, it's actually a result of accepting the alternate, and some work had to be done to tie the alternate into the drain system. And this is the rework that tied into the drains to come off of the van that is on the top of the, tying the auditorium in there.
Questions about that? Your recommendation, Dr. Paris?
I recommend that we approve change order number twenty-eight.
A motion, motion is in order.
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Swob.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wolf. Other discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries four to zero with Ms. Patkin absent. The next item, change order number twenty-nine.
Also for the high school, this is in the amount of four thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and eighty-nine cents. This one is a result of having, it's the trash compactor.
That was a scary item.
Well, when, when the, when the bid is put together, they bid for a, just a, I'm on the generic connection. And as we move further along, we want the same type of compactor that we're using at the current high school.
Okay.
It does the same thing. We're, we're tiding to run deep, so we have to meet their specifications on it. This is to meet their specifications on it, that in particular, that's the people's services out there, so we have to meet their specs.
Yes, yes.
That's the difference, Steve. It'll give us the same compactor services that we have at the current high school.
But that is just a scary-looking thing. The picture, do you have time to put the picture up there? It's, it's on the very last page of this, but it's just kind of a scary-looking monster. Keep going.
Is that it? Was that it?
It's at the very, oh, it's not, it has, it's for the rumpkey, yeah, it's, yeah, back up just a little.
There you go.
There. That, that was just too scary for me. I was afraid not to vote yes on this.
Takes a lot of steps, makes a little step.
Yes, yes. Okay. And your recommendation, Dr. Paris?
I recommend that we approve the scary-looking change order number twenty-nine.
A motion is in order.
I'll make the motion, I'll be ready.
Motion by Mr. Swob.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wolf. Other discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries four to zero with Ms. Patkin absent. Thank you. And now, the exciting discussion regarding the grade configuration for the elementary schools. Are you leading this, Dr. Paris? I noticed we had, we had a...
We got it.
Yes, I thought this is the tag team. Wonder which order we're gonna go in here?
I know.
Oh, I printed mine already.
You're getting a hard copy. You're getting a hard copy in addition to when we uploaded, we did put the numbers on the page, so to make the discussion flow.
So, so may I have that one after all?
Sure.
Since the pages are numbered.
Sure.
Thank you.
Tonight, we're going to present some information for you, which is for your information only. It's, it's just informational materials. And so I'd like to do just one little bit of a backup for, for folks, and a rationale for this configuration discussion. Again, I feel like Mr. Nance was giving his, is a recap of this, but basically, the, how we came about the funding is on May eighteenth of 2010, KDE identified three schools in Clark County as category five schools, and that... And that, those are schools that are forty-plus years old in a major need of renovation or replacement. Then in September of two thousand and ten, the state of Kentucky allocated ten million, six hundred eighty-nine thousand and change, I guess, to construct a new elementary school and to renovate Concrie Middle School. This, these two buildings were to house the students from the three category five schools. And during that timeframe, the SFCC, during the two thousand and eight, ten biennium, or that year, allocation from Clark County was two million, seven hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars. And the bonding capacity at that time was six million dollars. So with the combination of all of these sums, sources of this sum of money, nineteen million, four hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars became available for the building of the new elementary school and the renovating of Clark, of Concrie Middle School. If we could go to our next slide, please. No. Let's go back a little bit. Slide number three.
Next.
Next one from that. Okay. And this is just a recap of the current facilities plan. As you know, the current GRC building becomes a permanent six-eight center. The current ACT building becomes a permanent alternative school day, alternative school.
We can tell your accounts through an ACT building instead of an ACQ building.
Yeah, I know. I thought I corrected that. Sorry. I did on my notes. ACT, that's what we're gonna give it. We're always looking for a place. The current Clark Middle School becomes a permanent K-five center. The current Concrie building is being renovated to become a permanent K-five. The current Central Bush and Pilot View buildings are being replaced by the new elementary and renovated Clark Concrie Middle School to become permanent K-fives. Current Hannah McClure building until a new center is built is to become a permanent preschool center. Current Trap and Providence buildings are transitional. And current Shear building becomes a permanent K-five and current Stroh becomes a permanent K-five. So that's just an overview of what the current facilities plan says. So in essence, the current facility plan is saying that the elementary buildings are going to be K-five centers. And currently, that's the grade configuration we have in Clark County public schools. But in the near future, in thirteen fourteen, we're going to have two elementary schools on the same campus. So with that in mind, we were asked to put together some information. So what would a K-two, three, five centers look like for Clark County public schools? So if we can go to the next slide. And let me give you just a little bit of explanation with this. The next will be on that. Thank you. These numbers, how we arrived at these numbers, I think it's real important to know that. Remember, Dr. Arvin gave us the two thousand and eleven, twelve demographic and enrollment projections. That's where the source of the numbers that we have used. We simply rolled up a year and we made estimations based on the current kindergarten students that we have. To arrive at the numbers, they were rolled up and then for the K-two, three, fives, we split them out in grade levels. And for the K-fives, we simply add them together, divide it by two because you've got two schools on the same campus. So that's, and one, you may see a little higher number, maybe one or two students more, is because the numbers didn't come out even and you can't divide as children. You can divide numbers, but not children. So also the building, the numbers in red are the projection capacity for each building, and this also came from Dr. Arvin's report. So I'm gonna walk you through this, if you will, and I'm gonna kind of do it in quadrants. So if you will look at the top left corner, and we're looking at Fannie Bush, Central and Pilot View. And then, and we've got it divided up as a K-two, and then below there you see Central, three, five, and you'll see it's three, you know, three through five. And the red number is six hundred is the building capacity for the new elementary school. And currently, Central's capacity is four hundred and fifty, but with the renovated building, it's five hundred and twenty-five, according to Dr. Arvin's projection. That's where we got those numbers. So if you look at that upper quadrant, you're looking at with the new elementary, with their projected numbers in thirteen fourteen, about four hundred and seven students. And then if you're looking at Central, still in that particular quadrant up there, if you're looking at Central with a current capacity of four hundred and fifty, you will see that we have, we're projecting three hundred and ninety-five students in that configuration.
No, I don't see the three hundred and ninety-five.
Three hundred and ninety-one, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's three ninety-one, sorry. It's three ninety-one on my paper also. Okay? Any questions thus far? If we look at that. Okay, if I could direct your attention to the right-hand side, same quadrant, upper area there. In fourteen fifteen, the new elementary is built, Concrie is renovated. And so we looked at those same numbers, but we played with the scenario, what if you pulled Trap in at that time? There's what your numbers are going to look like in a K-two, three, five configuration. Four hundred and eighty-one in a, build of the new elementary with a capacity of six hundred and four hundred and fifty-seven with a capacity in the renovated Concrie of five hundred and twenty-five. Okay? Any questions there? Then if I could draw your attention to the middle of the page. So if we were to take these same numbers and put two buildings, K-fives, on the same campus, there's what our numbers would look like. And there's why you see a little bit of a discrepancy because, like I said, you can't divide children, you divide numbers. So that's what it would look like based on these numbers and these projections as a K-five in the new elementary and a K-five in the renovated Concrie. Okay? So that same line of thinking, recognizing that, remember in the facilities plan that Concrie, Clark Middle is to close and to become a K-five center. What if we, and you've got two buildings on the same campus, Stroh and Clark Middle, so what if we were to pull those numbers in? What would they look like? So in the bottom left quadrant, we've got fourteen fifteen pulling in Stroh Station, Providence and Hannah McClure. Stroh Station's capacity is six fifty and the projection there would be six eighty-six. And Clark Middle renovated would be eight forty-seven and the projection there would be five sixty-five going in a K-two, three, five configuration. Now, we didn't add the same pay, the same thing that we did with, like, the preceding one with the new elementary and the Concrie as renovated, but you simply add those numbers together and you would divide by two. In that same line of thinking, let's go to that last quadrant, and we've got Shear School. So if we were to create Shear School as a K-five center, and in this case, we play with the scenario of pulling Trap into Shear, what would that look like? So Shear School is one building, but you could do a K-two, three, five based on wings, or you could combine it. So if you look, and I have it here as a K-two, three, five, then we're looking at the total, you're looking at five hundred and twenty-five total students for the whole, which Shear School. Regardless, since it's one building, it's gonna be five hundred and twenty-five students, whether you divide it into wings or you have it as a one total K-five center. Okay? Any questions on the roll? Okay? We're just gonna talk to you about the instruction. What that would look like.
We kind of wanted to take our current designs of our buildings that we have right now, K through five, and we wanted to look at some advantages and disadvantages when we're looking at curriculum, instruction, assessment, resources, and actually the climate of the building, and break it down into a table for you. And hopefully, this has been helpful. It's kind of helpful for us because we hashed it out, looking at curriculum, what would be the advantages of having a K-two, three, five building? And some disadvantages of the curriculum. We also have the instruction, the advantages and disadvantages of a K-two, three, five center. And I'm not gonna read all these out loud. I think you have them. Resources, we kind of looked at the resources, I think. One thing that we looked at would be additional media center resources for a K-two type center because in a media center, you have a lot of materials, reading materials for your upper grades. So we will need to make sure that we focus on providing the materials for a K-two center. Assessment, we also have advantages and disadvantages for that. Some of that would be extending our map assessment window for a three, five building because we do spend a lot of time on doing map assessments for them. And then climate, we looked at developing a campus effect as an advantage of having the centers. And the only disadvantage for that would be an additional transition in the elementary years. If you continue on, then we have the K-five design, which we currently have. So we just kind of hit the high points for our curriculum and instruction, the resources and assessment. If you look at climate, one thing that I think we will have to discuss, if you have two K-five buildings on the same campus, you're probably gonna have to look at some redistricting to determine how those two buildings would actually fall out with the, with the students. Anybody have any questions on kind of that curriculum and instruction piece? And we really tried to tailor it to Clark County of what we currently have. We did do a lot of research to compare to other models, but we wanted to make sure that we tailored it for our district.
Did your research indicate anything about the number of districts where they have this configuration?
No, we didn't really.
We, some of the research that we looked at, there are several, if you look at it nationally, we looked at it in the state of Kentucky. I think we, there may have been about three, and a lot of them are going to K-eights. But nationally, we've seen it both ways with K-two, three, five. You've even seen some K-threes, four, fives, some K-threes, four through six. So it's, there are just, and what I would like to emphasize here is that many of the configurations depend on what the population need is in that particular district. It's not really, really focused on one is better than the other. It's usually based on what does that district, particular district need based on facilities? And how would you be able to get your population into the facility? That's basically how people decide on configurations.
Thank you. And now Stacy has.
And now the staffing and the money part.
And don't worry, I'm not gonna go through every single one of these slides individually. I will tell you how we arrived at this. What you'll see for each slide, I have one for certified staff, one for classified staff for each configuration. So the first one, looking at the Fannie Bush, Central, Pilot View, two thousand and thirteen, fourteen possibilities. We have the administrative staff, which would be our principals, counselors and librarians. Then we have the column for our teaching staff, total certified being of those two, and our special education staff. I will make a note about the special education staff. You may see, did it say we would require more staff than we currently have? Because you'll see my last line on each slide is our current staff. That is because we took our kindergarten class, eleven, twelve, our numbers from Infinite Campus, and rolled them up to second grade, which dropped off our fourth and fifth, which actually had low numbers for special ed students. So the special ed child count that we were looking at for these particular scenarios is higher than what we currently have. So that's why you're seeing the increase. But as you can see, consolidation in general does show a reduction of staff. And then this particular configuration does not show a difference between K-two, three, five or two K-five buildings. And I made the note at the bottom of every certified slide that itinerant music and PE teachers will be assigned based on the enrollment of each building, as said in our staffing allocation plan. The second slide here for the same configuration, we have classified staff. We've broken it down by categories. What you'll see here, of course, is a lot of the office staff. I based this on our current staffing plan. And except for Stroh Station, every school gets one secretary, every school gets one computer lab slash attendance clerk. We tried to do the custodians as similar as we could. Since we don't go by square footage, we went by the similar sized schools. Kindergarten assistants went by, of course, how many of our kindergarten teachers came up? They got an assistant for each of that. And you might see like the increase in one kindergarten assistant here. Can we do the rounding? As you remember, we have the rounding at the elementary level. Food service staff got the required hours from the food service director and based on enrollment, how many hours were required. And so we were able, you'll see some reductions, potential reductions there. And the special education staff on the classified side, since there's not a state formula for that, those are assigned based on need, we left that the same because that will depend on each individual child's case and case. And as you'll see, I have done two of these slides for each configuration. The next slide being the scenario of Fannie Bush, Central, Pilot View and Trap on the same campus. And as you'll see, overall reduction, potential reduction for current staff. And then the K-two, three, five requiring one less certified staff. As I said, that breaks out with the rounding and how the students are divided. And as I said, I'm not gonna go through each of these details, but the next one, looking at the classified staff for the same scenario, you do see some potential reduction there just due to the consolidation. The next slide, Stroh Station, Providence, Hannah McClure, so we're looking at that for two thousand and fifteen, fourteen, fifteen. And again, you continue to see overall potential reduction with consolidation. And in this scenario as well, one less certified staff required on the K-two, three, five. And then, of course, one additional potential on special ed, that kind of washes out, but it's a reduction of about one point five. And then the classified, continuing with that. Kind of see the continued reduction of the office staff, but the custodians, kindergarten assistants, you don't see a lot of difference there. The final slide, looking at the scenario of Shear and Trap potentially being together. So the first line showing what it would look like if Trap was consolidated with Shear. The second line, Shear alone. The last line being the current staff for those two buildings combined. So when you're comparing current staff, you wanna compare the current staff line to the Shear with Trap because it is the current staff in those two buildings. So you do see a little bit of potential reduction on the administrative staff side, and then the teaching staff, potential reduction. And then the next slide, of course, would be classified staff. So the bottom line on staffing, consolidation in general leads to an ultimate potential reduction. And in most of these, the K-two, three, five configuration may result in one less certified staff than two K-fives. And you'll see that kind of reflected in the cost analysis, which we're getting ready to go over because the staffing is a big piece, the biggest piece of the cost analysis. On these, I've only done one sheet for each scenario. So if you're going down. Looking at Fannie Bush, Central and Pilot View in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen. So I have the cost of the K-two through five configuration in the first building, or the first column, I'm sorry. The potential cost of two K-five configurations and the current cost of the schools listed in this potential combination. And as you'll see, because there was no difference in staffing, there's not really a difference in cost on this particular configuration. But you will see that it's a reduction of our current cost. And I will note, on most of these, you may see transportation being increased from the current cost. That's because you're gonna be transporting so many students a little bit farther, a little bit longer routes. The second slide, Fannie Bush, Central, Pilot View and Trap, looking at two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. You do see because of the potential decrease in certified staff, classified staff, that the K-two, three, five configuration is a savings of about sixty-seven thousand dollars over the two K-five buildings. Both still a reduction over the current cost. And don't worry, Mr. Swob, I've got some bottom line numbers at the end.
It's not bad. It's just, I have a nice big monitor at the house and go to this laptop. It's like, oh, I get rid of laptop now.
The next slide, Stroh Station, Providence, Hannah McClure, kind of continue to see the same trend. K-two, three, five configuration is about twenty-three thousand less than two K-five buildings. K-2, 3-5 configuration is about 23,000 less than 2K-5 buildings, but overall, and I think the reason on the K-5, that one ended up a little more, was because of the rounding on some kindergarten teachers. Even just a tenth, when you're rounding at the elementary level, can bump you up an additional teacher because of the way our staffing policy rounds. And the final slide here, Shear and Trap, looking at the cost of potentially Shear with Trap, Shear by itself, current cost of listed schools. So you want to compare that current cost of listed schools to the first column of Shear with Trap, and you do see a significant savings there. Bottom line, last couple of slides, and what it boils down to is the third bullet, consolidating the current elementary schools excluding Shear into four K-5 buildings costs approximately $89,995 more than consolidating the same schools into K-2, 3-5. So that is looking at every school except Shear, kind of looking at that 2014-15 cost when everything would be finally settled down. And the final slide is just kind of a comparison on where to put Trap, because we have shown you two potential scenarios, putting Trap with Fannie Bush Central Pilot View, putting Trap with Shear. And the bottom line is, the lowest cost is to consolidate Trap with Shear.
Does it include transportation cost?
Yes. You can get these different, same differences that I did by adding the tables on the previous pages, is where I took them from.
Well, folks, this is phenomenal. When we first had this discussion at our retreat of what we thought we wanted, and our superintendent communicated that to you all, when I don't think we were even sure, you know, it was just such a new thing that we knew we had to do, and then you all have developed this document that just spells it out. I mean, it's overwhelming. It's just tremendous. You know, that you can take just our very scatterbrained ideas, or, you know, because we weren't sure what was out there or what we thought we wanted, but it is excellent. Thank you all so much. I mean, the information is fantastic and so easily presented, but we understand what we asked for. Thank you for understanding that for us, Dr. Ferris.
I'm a doctor. Just kidding.
But it is a, I mean, it is an excellent document, folks. It's, um...
It was so easy, the staff. We came in this room one day, and I said, okay, board needs some information, and I want to publicly say that there's not been any decisions made. We do have a decision, the board has a decision that they have to make. We haven't had any preconceived idea what that needs to look like, but the only way that boards can make decisions based on these kinds of things is we got to present them the information. And so, came in this room, and we kind of hashed out some things, and talked about what would make sense to the public, what would make sense to the board, and this is what we came up with. And, you know, if there are some additional questions, of course, that's what tonight is for, for you all to dialogue and talk about what other information do you all need from us. And so that's the discussion for tonight for you all, and we're listening to see what else we can put together to share with you. And of course, we know that these decisions have to be made by 2013-14 school year. Am I right? Yeah. Is that right? Yeah. So we are about a year out. And I say that to say that there has to be a decision made, I would think, in order for us to do all that we need to do as a district and for our stakeholders and for our staff and everybody, that I would recommend that we have some type of decision or an approval that you want to look at by November of 2012. And I say that because it's going to take some logistics on our part to make sure that we are ready to go when 2012, 2013 gets here, 2013, 2014 gets here, because the schools are going to be ready. The second thing is, you want to give yourself time to get some input and feedback from your stakeholders. So that's why we wanted to start this discussion tonight, give you the information, hear from you, give me direction as to what you want the next steps to be. And if you need additional information from us, that's what we need to hear tonight. I do want to preface that there's not been any decisions made. Please, I want to say that again and again and again, that this is just for discussion for the board, for them to start thinking about what they want this to look like, because these buildings will be opening in 2013, 2014.
So, board members, what else do we need? I mean, the, you all just don't understand how fantastic I think this is.
Lots of people have...
Well, it's, I mean, and you can tell that, I mean, it is just excellent. So, you know, I don't know of what else I need.
Well, actually, there's two things. Lawrence Ken, which is Louisa, he got hit with, by the tornado that destroyed West Liberty. I had the privilege of going up there now and cleaning up a couple of days. An old high school friend of mine asked for volunteers, so that's what got me up there. And I spoke to a couple of them, and I just sent Dr. Elaine, or Dr. Ferris, someone called you Elaine.
Or Dr. Align, that's okay.
Dr. Elaine. That they also have a K-2, 3-5 system up there. So if you want to look at your role model in state, that is where you need to start. That's one school. And the second thing is, after my brain got fried by all the numbers here, if we go with Shear, Trap, IF, big IF, if, what are we doing with the extra space at the new central site, concrete site? That'd be my, that'd be a question. Because I saw everything there, but if, when you're doing your numbers and bringing Shear and Trap, okay, if you bring Shear and Trap together, then you're having Fannie Bush, Pilot View, and Central there, so...
And we just put together some different scenarios.
I know, I know, that's why you scenario, it's like, okay, it was...
And actually, the board asked for those numbers too, that there was a recommendation from the chair to look at those, and so that's why we put those in there.
Didn't we say, based on current K through, or kindergarten special needs students, that we would need more staff in the near future?
Yeah, we estimated about, as I said, we took the kindergarten for the current year count, rolled that up to second grade, and assumed kindergarten in first, in the same levels that they are this year, which is higher than what the fifth was, but that did when you rolled down. Second, third graders from the fifth, it inflated. We will have to see how that...
Yeah, that's the one thing I saw in paper form.
The other thing too is, of course, these are projected numbers two years out, and you have a better picture of that a year from now.
A year from now.
A year from now. For now, you know, that's, those are the numbers we have to deal with, so we can have some kind of projection and be proactive.
Pro, not reactive.
Other questions or comments? No? Do you think of anything, Dr. Kadak, or where you are, Ms. Wolf, anything? Thank you all. That seems so inadequate for the amount of work that has gone into this, but we really appreciate this information. Thank you.
What would be, what do you want to go from here?
Well, at what point do we share, I mean, this is a public meeting, obviously, but when do we have a stakeholder get together? You know, where, you know, this is shared in some form with, you know, the affected stakeholders.
So you can get some feedback and put...
Yes, yes.
You can...
Is that a, I mean, that is a next step, but is it the next step?
I think it would be, unless you all have, you have not indicated tonight that you need additional information, so the next thing would be for us to hear from our public. And from the public's input and feedback, then we may have to come back with additional information, to provide additional information. So I would think that would probably be the next step. I would recommend that you, that we kind of wait till this school year kind of is wrapped up before we start down that road, so I can come back next month and give you some tentative dates, or you can send me some tentative dates that you would want to look at, and then we can bring it back to the, to the board for approval.
Anything else related to this topic? Okay, thanks, so we'll look at those. And the only internal board business is to set a date for the follow-up high school tour, and that date was mentioned as Thursday, the 29th, is that correct?
What time?
I believe it's 4:00 P.M.
Did you say 4:00, Dr. Kadak?
Does that work for you, next Thursday?
4:00 P.M., next Thursday. We'll do a rain date the Thursday after that, that's another spring break, I don't know what everybody's planning.
Oh.
Yes.
I'm good.
I think David will do all of it.
Okay, so we'll, so we'll do this tentatively for the follow-up. So, by general consent, do we agree for the follow-up tour of the new high school to be at 4:00 P.M. on Thursday, March 29th? At 4, well, it said 4:00, and then the rain date to be 4:00 P.M. on Thursday, what's that other date? April 5th?
5th.
Okay.
I want each joining you on the 29th. I'm going tomorrow, because we have a pre-scream for the principal selection process at Shear Elementary School, which has been on the docket for several weeks, but Paul will be with you, and so will Herman, will be with you on the tour.
Okay. We have to call it a meeting? Oh, I guess we do, so we'll have to advertise that.
We have to advertise it as a meeting, special meeting.
Since we will be together, yes.
Mr. Rosenthal, are you going to be joining the board?
On the 29th?
It's 4:00 P.M.
I don't know.
Depending on what your court schedule is.
I've got something for that day.
And if any staff wants to go, I'm going tomorrow at, what time am I going tomorrow? 1:00, if you want to go tomorrow with us, either one. I know a lot of staff wanted to go out. So you got two days, you got tomorrow, you got the 29th.
I suggest old shoes, even dry in, as dry as it is right now, old shoes, because the risk is about, I'm talking.
Okay. Old shoes, making that note. Okay. The next items are the consent agenda items. Does anyone have questions or comments about any of the consent agenda items?
Question.
Question? A motion is in order to approve or acknowledging, or acknowledge the following consent agenda items. BG for closeout document for the direct purchase order number 0746 hyphen 31, for the Clark County purchase order number 11010063, for Richard Supply Company for the new George Rogers Clark High School project, the Clark Middle School speech team trip to the University of Kentucky on March 29th through 31st, the Fannie Bush 4th and 5th grade trip to Mammoth Cave National Park for Environmental Day on April 10th, Clark County Day Treatment Chess Team trip to Minneapolis, Minnesota to complete in the national chess tournament, April 12th through the 16th, the GRC Boys Track Team trip to Philadelphia, Pennsylvania to compete in Pennsylvania Relays, April 26th through the 29th, the GRC Dance Team trip to Williamsburg, Virginia to compete in Jam Fest dance competition, May 4th through the 7th, the GRC Girls Soccer Team trip to Lexington to attend soccer camp, July 10th through the 13th, the GRC Girls Soccer Team trips to Murray and Louisville to compete in scrimmages, August 2nd through the 4th, the Kentucky Tech Clark County Area Technology Center trip to Indianapolis to visit the Automotive Technical School on April 13th, acknowledge the cash position report, acknowledge the Clark County Motor Vehicle Tax Report, acknowledge the Clark County Sheriff's Report, acknowledge the monthly financial report, acknowledge the General Fund Budget Summary Report, acknowledge the Notice of Personnel Action Report, and authorize the payment of salaries at accounts payable. A motion is in order to approve, acknowledge, or authorize those items.
Great question.
Motion by Mr. Swob.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wolf. Other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries 4 to 0 with Ms. Fatkin absent. A motion is in order to adjourn to closed session for KRS 61.810 hyphen 1F.
Take a motion.
Motion by Ms. Wolf.
Yippee. Bob second, sorry.
Second by Mr. Swob. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries 4 to 0 with Ms. Fatkin absent, and we are adjourned at 9:20. We'll reconvene in closed session at 9:25. We have a short break?
Oh, definitely.
Okay.